Is to the right of the United States of America into the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your meeting. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from January 22nd, regular meeting?
Yep. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody looked at the claims in the amount of $680,113.44?
Motion to approve and play?
Uh, second.
You got the first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Prove and play, claims filed with the county auditor for $1,038.25?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Prove the hiring of Pamela Bascom, motor vehicle assistant treasurer's office in the amount of $24.59 per hour effective February 8th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Down to discuss Iowa passenger rail expansion. I don't know, who wants to take the lead on this one?
That was brought up at our Intertog meeting several months ago. And they're just looking for support letters. Metropolitan planning organizations worked on this and then it's went on to the Iowa Legislative Transportation Committee. And they're feeling the funding from this is going to come from Federal Rail Association and in the Infrastructure Jobs Act if it goes through. It's kind of interconnecting all the passenger rail systems through the country and there is an explanation of the support letter on here, what it's supposed to enhance and do for economic growth and environmental sustainability and reduced congestion. You both had that letter, didn't you? Tourism, recreation, and increased safety. This is, they're not asking for any kind of a dollar commitment, what for member, any counties, cities, or anything like that. They're just asking for a support letter. For the legislative transportation committee to move forward with the working on this and dividing. I talked to Nick Protski this morning, Director of Transportation at Intertog. And he says right now through our region, there has been 25 support letters turned in in support of this.
So essentially, he just wrote the letter for us, although he did sign it?
Yes. So that's just a support letter saying that we're in support of moving forward on this and the study and developing this rail system, passenger rail.
Clayton, I get your question. I'm, since sustainability, we're talking about environmental sustainability, but financial sustainability is a big question I have. Antrax suffered and had to be supported forever. And I see this as another national drain on funding. I don't know how we're going to support it.
I don't know with the Federal Rail Association, I don't know what that, too much about that association, but that's Nick told me that, Protski told me that's where some of the money's coming from along with the Bob's Act to get this moving forward.
And it's another three letter bureaucratic nightmare that we're going to sink a lot of money into.
Well, there again, I don't know, they got all the reasoning behind this is it's a good, it's a good thing to support, so. Now I get it, the money thing, but I don't see it leading down to local governments needing to put any dollars into it.
Or will it become an unfunded mandate in five years?
They think the rail system stopped in the probably the mid 60s, 1967, I think is when the last passenger rail went through here. It's one of the things they want to reactivate.
When I look before Dodge, it was about 1970 that they closed both the depots and
My brother, when he was in his, my older brother was in the Navy, he rode back and forth, the train back and forth from the great place. That would've been just prior to the rail system getting shut down, remember? My dad picking him up and dropping moss pile here to people.
Back in the 30s and 40s, they had that interurban that ran, I know it ran from oh, three Ford Dodge, came from North, I don't know, it's from Bull or where. Ford Dodge to Boone, to Ames, to Des Moines, back. And it was pretty heavily used, but it disappeared in the early 40s because people were buying cars. They're driving and it's more convenient.
Well, there again, this is just a letter of support. They're not asking for any kind of a commitment from us other than we'd signed a letter or something. We're supporting the study and moving forward. And I, who knows, it probably might not even develop and happen.
Did anyone go in and look or read that letter of support that's already generated?
Yeah.
Because it's strictly for Blackhawk County.
So the Blackhawk County MPO?
Yep, region, yeah.
So what's consistent in the Blackhawk County?
So it really kind of has nothing to do with Buchanan County. It's the letter of support.
We're going to act about these things coming right through in Buchanan County.
Maybe. What rails are they going to use?
Existing rail.
For sure?
That's what I've been told. They're not putting in a new rail line.
But they'd have to take some land for a depot. If your independence is going to benefit.
They could just use a depot we already have.
Yep.
Yeah. So next to the correct?
I guess I'm gonna
It looks like it's
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we do the support letter.
Need a second, I, a second.
For the discussion?
And I guess for the we can have the chair sign this.
And it's all going to be done online if I recall? Okay.
It's just within that email that was sent out, you go in and type in your name, your title, representing in your email, hit submit.
Okay. So we have a first and second, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No.
We're going to do a roll call then?
Please.
Okay. Bert?
Yes.
Vogel, yes?
Kurtz, no.
Agenda. Uh, discuss doors for the sheriff's locked area at the emergency operations center. Scott, can you explain something about that?
Yeah, um, as for that annex, there's quite a bit of costs that continued since people bought that building to replace Green Acres out there, a little annex. Um, I'm just requesting, um, some ARPA funds to help with my building budget. I'm, in the last year, I was able to get some of the locks. You know, the walls blocked up, the doorways blocked up, and some additional blocking on the, um, I guess the mezzanine level and that, in the shed area that I have control of. I'm just looking to replace two doors. I am getting some lighting that needs to be done out there. I have one semi quote. I'm repurposing some lighting that is being taken out of the EOC area. And using that lighting, they are LED lights. I'm hoping to use those lights to add to that room. And that's going to be anywhere between 1,000 to 1,500 for the lighting project and the wiring for, for the lighting. Doors, the two doors that I'm putting in, one is Other door, the interior door is $4,935.36.
Get toward one then.
And I'm also having us, but stairs that are going to be put in the spring.
Looks like the quote on the doors is $12,212.65 if I've done my addition wrong.
How much?
$1,162.66.
Ah, two doors?
Yes.
Aches.
The one door, they have to cut out concrete, the $7,000 one, there's a bit of structural tear out and put back in to implement it where, where it needs to be. So that's the cost of the two doors.
And the stairs around?
The stairs with materials labor is $1,050.
These quotes that you have, they come from Mott?
Um, for the two doors, yes.
Yeah, he just keeps on giving.
And with, I guess, the biggest thing, the one door, I definitely have to do. The interior door between the buildings is for the simple fact of being secure. Um, that, that would be the only entry door to that place if I didn't put the second one in. To the outside. Outside of the big overhead door. And I also have some concrete work that is being done, should be done this week that, um, and that's a $1,500 quote for the concrete work that needs to be done on the floor. To basically make to flush the flooring up so there's not a lip in the middle of the area, you know, creating a trip hazard. So going to be cutting out a chunk and floating those two surfaces together. So there's no three inch, four inch lip and no the flooring, concrete flooring.
So you got to pull some doors, stairs, the concrete, then the lights are all the way from
Um, yeah, that was just a verbal quote. I had electrician out there here last week without looking into the materials and that was a verbal quote. I have another ask and for an additional quote for that, um, lighting, lighting work right now. I just haven't got either one of those quote.
What was, what was the verbal?
Uh, 1,000 to 1,500.
I took it for total, I took the high of the, excuse me, the 1,500 price of the doors, the stairs and the concrete, and I got a total of $16,267.
Have funds and ARPA for that, right?
And there was a project that I requested for jail cameras and upgrade on the, the video retention of the jail facility. Um, I think I was given a $86,000 approval from ARPA during that project. I was able to get a $50,000 grant for that project. That went towards that, I believe, with the help of the region. Julie Davidson's office, I was able to utilize that 50,000 towards that project.
And the reason, and the reason it was down to about 36 then?
Yeah. I think even less than that.
That's good. Do you anticipate this is going to kind of wrap things up for you out there?
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's been kind of the project and some of the stuff already took out of last year's budget. Um, with Mott being out there and trying to get this done and not going over on my building fund, um, I know I'm just it's going to push me to my limits as far as I'm getting these projects done and still having something in there for unforeseen things. And the biggest thing is, um, I was able to do the brick, brick and stuff last year, after last year's budget. Um, I was kind of waiting to see I do these projects that with, like I said, with Mott being out there, I've seen their work, they've done, I think very good job. Um, they're there right now. They can get this, at least these two needed projects done in that kind of a manner. The stairs, I am going to still wait for that contractor to put those in the spring when he's, when he can do it.
Okay. Well, it's, it's one of them issues, uh, your, everything you got out there needs to be secured and and everything and
And we're kind of limited on usage right now until I for sure get that interior door completed because it's just a swing. Anybody can walk through that right now. It's just the old, that used to be the paint room area in that there for the old ride out.
So you're asking for ARPA here for this here and then of course your other project, we had a big reduction here, so we're still going to be ahead moving money around than what originally was thought. Yes, I, I'm in favor of letting Scott move ahead with this. I just
see us finish the building and
Yeah.
can walk away from it. That's what I was asking. Been going for two years now and going for three.
That's why I was asked, Scott, you know, this pretty much wraps things up. It sounds like, but there's always going to be something popping up. And you're, you're maintaining, take care of a building. There's always something that's going to come up.
In that motion, Christopher, spending ARPA, do you want, you don't want dollar amounts in there, correct?
I will, what if I can just word the resolution up to $16,267?
Okay. And so then we'll get a resolution this next week?
I will do one up now.
Oh, okay.
Because it's got to be included in this minutes.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, make a resolution up for that dollar mouse and for to move with this project.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Looking over my shoulder.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is mission statement for Buchanan County. So encompass the whole county, all the elected officials, all of our offices. So we're in this together. In the past couple of years, the innovation of the sheriff's office, allowing a deputy to be obtained, first responder training was awesome. Uh, the recorder, the camera recorder having acquired a camera to take passport photos. Once again, above and beyond. And those are taken to the auditor's office for people to get passports, which makes Buchanan County a one stop shop. Additionally, secondary roads is created and uses different road applications and bridge structures to obtain the best results for the county. Nonprofits, private enterprises, and governmental agencies are all organizations. The Merriam-Webster adjective definition of an organization is an administrative and functional structure, i.e. government structures. And it's time for a change. Most of us have been elected within the last four years. Five of the seven elected, elected officials are Gen Xers and no longer baby boomers. So it's time for a new way forward with respect to those who went before us. I propose, propose the following mission statement. Buchanan County is a high performance organization where employees, department heads, and elected officials are on the same effective and innovative team to create effective and efficient processes with results that are clear, accountable, engaging with citizens and residents.
Did you send that one to him? That's different than the one I printed.
I might have actually had added two words.
It looks entirely different.
I had the same one John has printed. There's a different one. I'll have to find it.
So, not an app, if I can, that one's up.
Way different.
So I think we had, there was two different ones submitted. Maybe that's the one that's in here.
Got the one for this ready?
Maybe, I'm not sure.
Okay, I need a suggestion, so I added it to the end.
Yep, three different ones. What I would like to do after this, if this is approved, is to take some of the history of Buchanan County and some of the part where the state code says we're the right arm of the state, whatever that's supposed to mean.
Yeah.
And make a little bit of a paragraph and then come up with some beliefs and some values for the county as a collaborative team. And this way, when somebody goes to look at apps, doing a job application, they have, they know what we are.
That definition you was trying to come up with that I looked up and found, on the definition of a county. County is a political and administrative division of a state providing certain local government services.
Right.
We all know that on an ongoing thing, we've always got our Iowa codes and everything we got to live by. So basically, uh, everything we do relates back to Iowa law somehow.
Us, I will grant you that. It does relate back to Iowa law, but Iowa did not tell Michelle Mangrich that she had to put what she put into her reporter's office.
I get that there's innovative things that are done above and beyond.
Right. We have rules and guidelines to work within, but those are you can do so many, so much stuff within those guidelines, you know, and if bottom line is if you keep doing those things the same old way, you're going to get the same old result.
It's how we, looking at doing it, so we motion is going to allow us to move forward with developing the mission statement and the, and the explanation of Buchanan County and
Yes, and the values and the beliefs.
That comes with basically with your vision statement. I, uh, came up with an alternative thing for a discussion. I don't know if all the department heads received that. I worked on it this weekend. So I think, did you guys get that sent to you?
Exactly. I think that this one this morning.
Yeah. You've seen it.
Yeah.
I guess I want to explain why I did, and there again, I agree with what Don's saying about a lot of stuff. We've got some really good department heads and employees here that are a little above and beyond. And I really think if you look at Buchanan County overall, our employees, our department heads and our elected officials, I, I can only say that one word is I'm very proud of what we got for people running this county and providing services to the county and our residents and stuff. And I came up with a little revision that I on the mission statement, a little different than Don, but there is some same wording in it. What I have trouble with is the word organization, where we're a government body. I mean, we don't call a city. I mean, I guess I've never heard a county related to as an organization or city related as an organization. Uh, we're, because it's pretty much a government body, taxing body. So when I'm road down the mission statement, Buchanan County Government, a collaborative team of employees, department heads, and elected officials that work as an effective and innovative team with goal to provide efficient, effective services with flawless results, engaging, engaging citizens, enhance the quality of life. And moving forward, I also wrote something up for a vision statement. To protect and maintain and improve infrastructure, promote growth. Buchanan County to be a safe and healthy environment and place proud to live.
Very good, Clayton. And I'm sorry that you've never heard of governmental bodies referred to as organizations before. Um, your 501(c) corporations are also organizations.
Yes.
As are governmental bodies. I don't like your word flawless because you're trying to, you're, you're trying to guarantee perfect service and nobody's perfect 100% of the time. You know, if we go out there with flawless, like somebody don't have enough rock on the road, obviously we didn't, that wasn't a flawless service then.
Well, we could change the wording on that.
I I don't want to come off negative, but I think we're getting we ahead of ourselves. I think we, this is something we really need to whether we have a work session or something, some of the department heads brought in, where we have a meeting and wordsmith this whole thing out instead of having five different versions out there, the same thing. So that we come up with one that's really clear and concise. I appreciate what you're trying to get done, Dawn, but I think we're throwing a shotgun at it and trying to knee jerk it through. And I think we're just accelerating a little fast. That's my first.
No, I'm just trying to open up a dialogue.
Yeah, well. But we truly have not had a dialogue about it until this past week.
Right.
And we haven't met to discuss it or anything else. And I think something, this is gonna be something that's gonna go down on the permanent record for a long time. And you're talking about making it the Buchanan County Mission Statement. It's gonna be on our website and anything else. I want it to come off perfect before we get to that. I'm gonna be signing my name to it. But I appreciate you bringing it up. But I don't know, in the grand scheme of things, I don't feel comfortable endorsing anything until we have time to really go through. I think Rick Wolko in one of his emails back and forth said the same thing about sitting down and really wordsmithing it so that it does come off very professional and meaningful.
As I added his words to the end, he said, this is what I would add to it. So I did. I hope it's the end.
Hey.
Karen?
Something I think that, you know, we were created in 1837. I haven't seen anything.
I use the insurance company's platform that I'm using to update our employee handbook. And here is one of the comments they mentioned about a mission statement. So maybe that might help. In going.
Let's see, insert your company mission statement below or add after handbook has been generated. Mission statement should communicate corporate and departmental goals to employees to allow employees to establish their own personal goals within job position. Mission statements can be prepared on an organization basis, department basis, or for each employee. The corporate mission statement should be placed in your literature and throughout the workplace.
So you're kind of, John, with your suggestions, maybe we could have a committee.
I would, I would like to see this table and sometime mid February, we get together and look at it again. I would like to get, I would like to have our department heads input on it. Because what I've seen, I've only seen the two department heads come in the back and forth.
Yeah. And they haven't reviewed anything different. You've seen the one.
They've only seen the one. And I think.
You have a couple of them here too. You know, certain comments.
Oh, three. I, it's hiding in the back there. Orion's there. Okay. I miss.
I like yours. I like that you took out flawless because what you said, that's what stood out to me first. And I was like, flawless is, it's great, it's kind of that is high reaching goal, but it's, it's pretty much impossible because what's flawless to me is not flawless.
Sets somebody up to fail.
So I like that that came out in your second draft. And then they're very similar. I think you can easily merge them together with some nothing and some other input from other department heads. Vision statement, I think, is equally as important. I think it's a good start. I just don't know if the order of the vision statement or if there should be other things. The vision statement should be really short. That people can recite essentially after their
Right.
And like ours is healthy communities or a healthy county for the public health department. If you have a mission vision statement. So I think with some weeks, it should be okay. And you can get a lot of people's input and then things start moving in other directions. So I'd like the fact that that you've sent this out and that it's a possibility that department heads and other employees can come to some input into the process.
Last mission statement I was involved with, which when I used to take over that position on the middle seat watershed authority and stuff like that, when we did a mission and vision statement for them, that went on for about six months.
It's gone for a while.
Yeah.
But especially that larger community that you're working with.
We, we started out where I was the one that opened it up first for a discussion at one of the meetings and then it went into two more meetings or just kind of opened. Everybody is throwing stuff out verbally on it and stuff. And then with that kind of what you mentioned, everybody said, oh, we gotta have a committee work on this. But some wording together that's gonna be fitting and then come back for a final decision vote on it.
It's hard to have a committee when you can't talk to each other.
I know.
That's why I said we need to have a work session. And whether we could incorporate that in with a department head meeting in February, March, or how we want to do it. But I think I want my department heads. That's my personal opinion.
Yep.
That should have a say in what goes into this mission statement.
Yep, that's exactly why I sent it to the department heads and the elected officials.
But I'd like to see us be able to have a roundtable discussion and maybe we can craft it there. But I would like to hear everybody's thoughts when they get all focused on that one project. Because we all have a lot going on in our jobs and, you know, you can look at, okay, whatever. Yeah, that's fine. And you're gonna have to live with that for the next 30 years, 50 years, whatever it is.
Yeah, that's something you don't want to have a living document, keep it changing it all the time.
Yeah.
And I call it, you know, I shouldn't say, you just, you just can't come something with something off of our, we, we're looking at, like I said, something permanent. So we gotta make it as accurate and fitting as possible.
Brian, did you have any?
I was just looking because I'm not sure. I just searched what you'd sent me and I'm not finding it. And I didn't find what Clayton is. Yeah, I didn't find anything from Clayton either. So I'm I was just searching my inbox and not finding anything. So thank you.
I think John, you mentioned department head meeting, maybe in our next department head meeting. When hopefully we got everybody's able to come.
Good reputation.
Bring it up and see what we can form a committee out of that department head meeting. And see what people want to be involved with it, volunteer to be involved with it and work on it and stuff.
I'd like to make that as a motion.
When is the next department, excuse me, department head meeting?
Valentine Day, February 14th. Well, if that's what the chair, if the chairman wants to hold it at that time, they're probably only upped it up to the supervisor chair.
I did have the security meeting down as the 12th too.
I did too.
So I don't know what's going on.
Let's figure that one out. I'll get with Rick and Chris and figure out and then have it that same day. Whether it's the 12th or the 15th.
So I guess I would make a motion that we put this on hold until we have further discussion at a department head meeting.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Dawn, for all your work on it.
You're welcome. We're gonna discuss assisting small towns with snow removal.
Step forward.
Yep. Bring a guy with a lemon colored shirt.
Big banana day.
Good morning. This is almost an antique now.
Yeah, 2008.
Yeah. The question goes back historically. We've helped the small towns as we could. We've always tried to do that after we got our work done or where it fit in there in a logical manner. And I think the logical manner is probably what brought the question up this time because Phil had told the guys being at five all. Brian Quinn got in a little bit earlier, so you'd requested to have a street plowed. We've historically built back after that too.
Yep.
And so Brian went ahead and did the street. Well, there's some county rock roads hadn't been plowed, but it wasn't where Brian was at and physically able to do that. It was a logical manner and what are you doing?
And we build them for the time.
We build them for the time.
Just like we do in a grade racing. I think we set that back up when I was married. And 12, 13 years ago.
Or more.
Because we needed help and we, we set it up where rather than me call Brian, Brian get Phil, Phil get Brian. It was just a contact between whoever took care of it and the mayor or the public works guy. And we would call them in whenever they had time not to jump off anything else. And then they would bill it back to us, which we get bills from the county for this stuff. And this time I called Brian or texted them and said, when you get time, we had bad drifts on the road that I couldn't do anything else with.
Brian Quinn.
Yeah. Yeah, Brian Quinn.
Right.
So.
Isn't like a 28 degree?
For doing this?
Yeah.
We don't have a 28D for assisting that way. We have it for the roads interchanging down there.
Right.
We do, we do racing and you guys do the rest of our highways and stuff. So we have a 28D agree amount and all that. But racing, we can't, we don't have a road grader and we don't have a big plow. So we pay you guys to do that in excess.
Yeah. And I said, I think Jessup has one where you come in on Shady Grove and you head back out the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, because it's a loop.
Yeah. And we're actually defining North Street too, because part of it, you do part of what we do. And, and parts inside city and parts in the county.
Right.
That's how racing is. Parts in the county, parts in city. So we take care of it as far as plowing it. But when we need a big plow, we pay the county to come in and do it because we can't win road back like they can with the grader. Yeah. And that's kind of the same on North Street at Jessup too. And it's impossible for the city to plow it, then we're supposed to step in and help.
You're talking foreign market.
No, this isn't beyond foreign market. There was Racine because Racine's not foreign market. But it's part city, part county. Yeah, I'm sure it's just a local road.
It is. Thing about this, we're, we're not just, if we make a decision on this one way or another, we're affecting not just the city of Kwaski, that we're affecting all because once we say, yeah, we're willing to do this.
Yeah, we are.
Then, then you're gonna have all these other cities that are gonna find out about it. And then they're gonna say, okay, Buchanan County can come in and push our street back when we, we need it to be done. And not only that, I brought it up because this is something that's gonna have to be spoken about to within county attorney. So I asked his opinion on it. And he said, you're open up thing, if you've got the county's equipment, the county's employee inside in the city, my Mr. Doing some work, that puts the liability 100% on the county. Because it's our person, our equipment. Now, thank God, when I got a call about this and I thought, I'll go look at it. And I had some other roads I was gonna check an area I had some complaints about. And thank God you were there because that junction box for communications was right there. And I thought, oh my God.
But it's dead anyway.
Yeah.
They're dead. I checked the EV phone, but I was there. Yeah.
But I'm saying anything can happen, you know, you're just not, if one of our operators are in town and they cause an accident, injury, worst case scenario, it'd be a death or any kind of property damage, that's gonna fall back on the county, period. Because it was our person doing it and it was our equipment doing it. And that's, that's what makes the thing a whole steer. I'm not about, against helping out towns. I'm all about that. And I think we should be, but we gotta protect the county for liability issues here too.
Was that on Racine? He did Racine also, but it was on Walnut Street.
Okay.
That new street that comes in by the county shop, that's the one that drifted that bad. That's where he opened it up. Whatever we need to do, I mean, I mean, it's just convenient that we can hire you guys to do it. You're right there. You know what to do. Brian's familiar with it. You know, if we have to, I'm sure if the city has to do a thing that's, that you guys are held harmless if you hit a mailbox or whatever. But we're, you, when I've been out there with him, I walked, I know what's there. And so I, I mean, I was standing there when he was doing it.
Well, there's all kinds of scary. I remember the story about what Brian bought up one time. Thank God a road grader, an operator caught it in time. There was a child, they were building tunnels and snowdrifts up.
Yep. I had one do it already this year. I had that happen. I get it.
Kids roam around, they like playing in the snow and digging tunnels.
Yep. I understand. And this was at 4:00, 4:30, whatever in the morning. That shouldn't have been happening. I mean, try and, I try and get shit done, Darf and nobody's around down there. Whatever we need to do, it's just nice. We can work with the county and you guys are able to do this for us. Otherwise, we gotta try and hire somebody that's busy already plowing snow sometime to ever get in there. This was sort of, I had one little alley through there because it drifted and I had no equipment. And that's our fault, but you know, we need it one time, probably in the last five years to do this as far as Walnut Street.
Well, it's up to this board to decide what kind of like, well, we want to stretch our neck out and chop posts and put ourselves in liability risk or not here. But the same token, I feel that we need to help our cities out. We're we're supposed to be a team trying to
We appreciate it greatly.
Who do a 28E agreement, does that put us at as, at as much liability?
Unless it's spelled out in there. It's still something I think that's gonna be talked about. Maybe our county attorney, he came back really, really brave with me. He's it just, his one statement said that it's our equipment and our person, employee, it's our liability, period.
It's the same as ours is plowing. You know, I get that. I understand it totally.
How far does the county come in on Lynn Street from the east?
That's probably 28. You guys do all of Lynn and all of water.
Okay.
And then 277th and 278.
Yeah.
There's your drive there. That's the range of 28E we had years ago, because you drive over them to get there and everything. So.
Is this something that there could be a possibility amendment to the existing 28E, some, some additional wording put in it? I don't know.
That would be the county attorney's question.
He's a bit busy right now.
See, I I hate to overcomplicate these things, but we got to to protect the county in case of a disaster. I would look at modifying the current 28Es. I wouldn't have to come up with a
Individual one.
Right.
And state it's something that the county will assist in helping.
As time allows.
As time allows. And I mean, which is always bad.
Maybe during snow emergencies, some type of wording like that at the request of the city.
Sure. Now, another little thing on Ryan Scott's here, because if there's true emergency, Scott tells me there's an emergency, we go anywhere and do most anything.
Can you, Brian, come up with some wording maybe to fit into this and then we'll get it to the county attorney?
We can try and put something together and saying, this is our, this is our typical 28E developed by ISAC and about
Does anyone have a copy of that?
Sure, I've got copies. I've, I've got signed copies of all of them that have all been recorded at the Secretary of State's office too.
That one doesn't sound familiar, so I didn't think I had it.
Two thousand four, really, we developed a lot of the different twenty eighties. Now. When, when we do that, I don't know if it's in there about grading, helping us grade racing, so. Because I think that was just to understand that you guys build us back, so we sort of, not only winter, but summer, you know. Helping maintain it at our request and then we get it back. And I'm not sure that's in the twenty eighty, but that's where we need to get. Exactly. All because it's always pretty much been that way. Racine's a rock road, the city. The city at one time originally had a maintainer, then they, then they would blade it. Then it got to the point that couldn't afford to keep the maintainer running.
Yep, yep.
And then the county ended up doing it and billing back.
Yep.
And when we put rock on. When we. You blade it when you put rock. You guys blade it, because we have nothing to blade it with, and I don't know how much a road grader, but it's not very feasible for us to buy a road grader. New motor grader's about four hundred thousand. Yeah, that's our one-year budget.
I think, Lord, I would be in favor of Brian putting some wording in there and the existing one and see if, and then run that past our county attorney.
And as long as it doesn't put our people and our equipment at risk, I would be fine with it. I am a little concerned about overtime, but.
Yeah, we try and avoid the, yeah, we try and avoid the overtime and try and catch it. But that goes back to, hey, you get some. There were times when the county crews worked from October on through March, every day, including Sundays and. Well, that week I had eighty hours myself.
Right now.
So. What's that?
You better be knock on wood right now. We don't want no more snow than what we got.
No, we'll get it though. We will.
I'd make a motion based on what Clayton said, to have Brian come back to us with the.
Propose some wording to the county attorney's office.
That we can take to the county attorney.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, in the meantime, if we get in a pinch, are we able to do this or on, on what we had, had going already, or, or what, how are we going to do this?
Seek forgiveness, not commission.
Okay, we will do that. That's all we need to do. Thank you.
I think we, we'd do it for years, might as well.
Yeah.
I Sergeant Choles, I see nothing, I heard nothing.
Well, you're going to hear it, because evidently you heard about this. Evidently, we need to do it at three in the morning rather than four.
I guess you can just watch that tape that we're making, then you can hear about it.
Yeah. Uh, we appreciate it greatly.
Thanks, Jeff. Good luck.
Thank you.
Red Green said roll in us together.
That's right. Thanks, guys.
Do I have any public comment?
Will the, uh, firefighter be in the minutes?
Yeah, I'll have to kind of figure a way to get it off their website.
Oh.
It's all Blackhawk towns.
Okay.
Actually, I'll just send it to you. On that phone.
It's all I can think of.
Anything for that?
Nope.
I have a question.
Yeah.
All yours, Joe, here. Liz and Brandon, on that, what, what mile and a half section between Brandon and Buchanan County Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Nine buck, three quarters of a mile, so yeah.
Okay. Um, we often, when, when, a few times that we get really dumped on like this, we wait little days to get plowed out. Uh, for Dubin, that part of Dubin to get plowed out. I don't know what's going on on the other side of Dubin, where goes Dubin, West Dubin, uh, because we can't get out. And. I don't, I don't have any idea who's responsible for it. I don't, we're Wisconsinites. I mean, we've been here for a while now, but, um, in Wisconsin, even if you had an emergency. It was illegal for you to go out and plow your, plow that county road, even if you needed to get out, or if service needed, ambulance service needed to come in. What's the law here?
Basically, if Scott says it's an emergency, I can go on private property, I can go basically anywhere. Or, when I say it's scattered, his people.
What if we have, what if we want, we have a problem where we follow our own driveway, because our driveway is about a quarter mile long. Um, we have a pile to do that ourselves. What if we get out on Dubin, because we need to get someplace or we need ambulance service to come in? Is it illegal for us to go out and plow that road so somebody can get to our driveway?
My answer is it happens on a regular basis, but we don't want you damaging the road in the process. And.
It's, it's one of those things that, I guess, if I have a child that needs an ambulance service and that's the only way down there, I probably going to make that decision of getting the ambulance there. Um, but we still have to keep it on the law. You can't do that, because then. Don't have the emergency, people are going to be out there. I guess. It's like speeding fifty-six mile an hour in a fifty-five zone is technically, but in thirty years, I've never wrote a speeding ticket for fifty-six miles an hour. Um, sometimes there's, we have discretion on the law, and. Um, that would probably be a good one to use a little bit of discretion if somebody's having a medical emergency and they're trying to. Get help to their place, and we could work through that. But still needed on the law to have, you know, people can't go out there and do that, because they do it, they don't have. To plow across the road and to create more havoc later on down the road, so, um. Just giving you a blank sheet of saying, yeah, do whenever you want. No, we can't do that. But, um, it's like there are situations and things that.
Three years ago.
Yeah. And like I said, we do have discretion on the law on those things. But if you guys have a medical emergency, you call nine one one, you tell us the road's blocked, um, the ambulance service can need some help. Obviously, it takes a while if they're not out, and if they are out, that's. To get somebody in a certain, you know, exact location where the roads need to be plowed, but that's something that can be in the works. Even when, I'm assuming that you're going to probably call nine one one or you have a medical emergency down.
Um, I believe the city of Brandon plows up as far as the Line Creek, Line Creek Bridge on.
Pretty much, yeah.
But then from Dubin down to Ben Buchanan Road, which is probably going to save me three quarters of a mile.
That's a rock road, yep.
If we could just get one pass through, you know, why the whole thing lay it three days to five? If you get one, just get one pass through there, so we can get in and out. That's what I.
It, it takes two to three days to cover the county rock roads. And so that's what you're really dealing with, is a motor grader to get down there and roll those rock roads. And. Yes, you say one pass, but stop and think of that environment too. Once it goes south past your place, it's got to come back north too.
They get two passes.
There, yeah, unless you're going to run the roads in Benton County. Yeah, two to three days is what it really takes to cover a rock roads, depend on the storms. Yeah, a lot of times they can plow it at six AM, and by eight AM, it's blown shut again.
It was three days before we even saw first plow by. I, I get it. I know that, because my road, same way, I was into third day of my.
Yeah, and hi- his roads, yeah, um, his motor grader operator retired too. And so now we're pulling a guy out of Independence, running down there. Actually, the gentleman's not even out of Independence, he's, lives over closer to the other side of Winter. That's the catch at two o'clock in the morning too. It's getting somebody to the shed to get to the equipment to get going out too.
It's, it's tough, like, we get down.
That's why it's nice to have people scattered around the county, because if I've got a true emergency, if it's over at Jessup, we try and get somebody from Jessup getting to it.
Can you forward me that link again?
Where?
The real.
I mean, what's your address?
So that'd be real close to where your new county conservation director lives too.
Yeah.
We might have Ben be a little bit worse.
There's either on the south side of the bridge.
I know it's quite a distance for them, since I travel, I mean, where my operator comes out of the Winter Shop to my. In my route down there, hands down, there's about twelve miles.
That's your one.
Ben. Ben.
Ben Bonner.
Ben Bonner, okay. He's just on the south side of the bridge off to the east.
The very first house on the left side of you, as you cross the Line Creek Bridge?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a new house. They just built that in.
Yeah.
Here and a half two years ago.
Yeah, it runs through there.
Okay, yeah.
Public comment?
Um, I was going to just bring up a couple of things, just. Solmax has wanted their materials back. I mentioned this last fall. You know, when I visit with Halil, Halil says, Brian, don't do anything, I'm going to be talking with them. Their, the catch was, he was, um, trying to get some sensors to put underneath them, and he was not able to get the sensors. He's still trying to work it out. Their emails are fairly nasty, but. Uh, Life Tech, but I've got about their materials. I said, all right, well, what it cost me to buy them from you? And they said about fifty thousand. I think, I, you can have them back. But, um, yeah, and then Life Tech is, um, saying, hey, right at this time, we can't donate any materials. We were hoping to get a quarter mile or so of materials from them, and that's about a hundred thousand a mile. Or more for theirs. And then, this is kind of good, because I did get a email this morning about frost on the roads. But our policy is we don't do frost runs. And it was a kind of fair when I visited with Alex, the roads were slicker and all good out except D twenty-two, while he rode, rode Delaware County Roads and, and US twenty. Up to D twenty-two, and it was good, but, so we don't do frost runs? Where would you start and where would you stop on that one if you did?
I know out here, this driveway is parking lot. You have to be a little cautious walking.
Yes, it's. It, it changed, changes fast too. Then the other thing I wanted to mention too is. In the state of Iowa, we did get a grant to upgrade our local road safety plans, because our current one's old enough that the federal highway wouldn't accept it anymore. And that means everybody working together, that's ambulance service, the sheriff's department, public health, secondary roads, all in new local road safety plan and effort to. Prove the safety on our roads. And we followed a lot of what the last one recommended. And we've made tremendous progress, thanks to Scott too. If we could just get people to wear their seat belts, we'd make even more progress, because that's where the majority of the fatalities occur. Uh, but if you go back to two thousand three to thirteen, we had twenty-one fatalities on our road system. What's listed right now is eleven. In ten, in a ten-year timeframe. And that's everybody working together, and that's where the local road safety plans comes into play too.
Any other public comment?
Brian, I did see over the weekend, uh, Blackhawk County had a statement staying off their secondary road, their gravels. Because of all the damage that's doing with the warm weather.
Yeah, we've got some.
Trying to urge the heavy loads, like the feed trailers and all that sort of thing, to use them in the early morning, while there's still some freeze in the surface.
Yeah, a little, it does help, it does help. I've got some issues. The only road I've really heard about having major problems was two hundred and fiftieth street. And we're not so sure utility hadn't gone down that too. But, um.
What, what, excuse me, where at? Two hundred and fiftieth?
The very east end.
That's my way.
Yep.
Is that why those barriers are out there?
Yeah, that area was, um.
They dumped their wood stove ashes in the middle of the road. That's what thinks mud.
Seriously?
I'm very serious.
We didn't, we just thought it was a utility had done something in there.
Yeah. No, they emptied their wood stove and dumped the ashes in the middle.
I'm wondering if that's the same individual that called complaining.
I'm not going to comment.
We can discuss this later. We can discuss this later.
Out of discussion.
Yeah, that's what it is.
You see all kinds of things all over the country.
Some of them, like, you can't work on your own, I guess.
Oh, yes, it's fun.
Anything else for the good of the cause?
Brady?
Oh, just a little update of the Pioneer Cemetery. Uh, we added your coming home cemetery to our bid solicitation list. Um, we completed work on a thing you had requested quite some time ago, a set of guidelines for requests for burial in Pioneer Cemeteries. Uh, and we completed that, and I think Al emailed you a copy. Uh, it's one of those things that, uh, you won't be faced with very often, I don't think. The county only owns four cemetery, four Pioneer Cemeteries. And, but we surprisingly had a, and I don't know, you may know whether you had a formal request. Uh, we had an inquiry on burial in the Shady Grove Cemetery. Uh, and I've seen it mentioned twice, uh, once was, uh. Al got an email from probably the person who would be requesting it.
It's heading.
And we also had an email covered for some, last summer on the subject. But I don't know if that means you've received a formal request.
We actually have this on next week's agenda.
What?
We have this on next week's agenda.
Oh, okay.
To go over what Al had sent in.
Okay. Yeah, what, uh, what he sent in, what we finished the other night, basically is not a set of rules and regulations, because that would suggest. Resolution for a, an ordinance. And since these are all unique situations and ordinance, we probably can do a type of, just by chance and making a decision. Okay, well, next week we'll come again.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
There's nothing else for the good of the cause? Motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for the answers.
Yeah, well, yeah, hog confinement centers that are up, they're running twenty-four seven. And again, it's two to three days to get to the road, so if they don't plow the road, how do they get in and out, things? Just the reality. And yet, if they start cutting in the rock and fixing rock in the road, then it's done, they're getting, they're crawling hard.
You're suggesting if you're running out of food down there, go in the hog confinement, pick up the hog and. There you go. It's right next door, right next to the lady.
A lot of times they have free ones in that little fenced area.
Eagles are guarding them though.
With their feet laying up. Sunbathing.
Contribution I was telling you about.
Yeah.
Human, uh, Ryan being rested and coming to our next, uh, I mean, did he sit down?
We could possibly do that. I just have to.
It's the last Thursday of the month.
Yeah. Um.
It'd be forward if we had the puppy.
Well, that's, I won't have until after July before we get the puppy back here and. That'd be. And I'm thinking. June is when he goes down for, to start.
I'm seeing you guys.
Checking the dog. And things like.